This program is brought to you by Newsworks in cooperation with the city of Eau Claire. This program is simulcast on WRF Neil E. 101.9 FM.
The Eau Claire City Council meeting is now in session. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Anderson?
Here.
Beaton?
Here.
Christopherson?
Here.
Emmanuel?
Here.
Gregert?
Here.
Klinkhammer? Lor?
Yeah.
Weld?
Here.
Worthman?
Welcome to our Monday, June 22 virtual meeting of the Eau Claire City Council. And I want to extend our sincere welcome to all of you joining us remotely for this meeting. Again, for those of you that would like to address the city council, you must join the meeting as an attendee on a computer, tablet, or smartphone using the link provided on the city website. The Eau Claire City Council conducts public hearings, listening sessions, and public discussion where residents in our community are invited and encouraged to ask questions and weigh in on the important decisions we will be making later this evening in our legislative session or in the coming weeks and months ahead. We want to thank Valley Media Works for live streaming this proceeding. To watch, please visit ValleyMediaWorks.org or visit Channel 994 on Spectrum Cable. It is also signed the cast at 101.9 FM. And you can find past meetings on YouTube under the Chippewa Valley Media Works channel. If you plan to address the council this evening, I will briefly review the protocol. Once an agenda item is introduced, the staff will present on that item, and following that presentation, the council may have questions to clarify an issue. We then will open the item for public input. Once the item is open for comment, please raise your hand on the WebEx screen, and I will call on you in the order in which the requests to speak are received. When it is your turn to comment, I will unmute you and ask you to please state your name and your address, and then begin sharing your comments. We welcome you to speak for five minutes, and I will notify you when there is only one minute left. When you have reached five minutes, I will then ask you to bring your statement to a close. I will then ask you to lower your hand, and you will then be muted, but are welcome to stay online to listen to the rest of the meeting or share a comment during our public commentary period. There are times when council members will ask you follow-up questions, so please give us a moment before you disconnect. Again, if you wish to speak on an item that is not listed on the agenda, you may do so during the public comment period. Lastly, if you're not comfortable speaking in public, you can fill out a comment form on the city website, and those comments will be shared with council members ahead of our legislative meeting tomorrow. As always, you can email or call us, and our contact information can be found on the city website. With that introduction, we will get on to our first order of business, which is Agenda Item Number One on tonight's public hearing.
Council President? I'm sorry, Council President?
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton is on the phone. This is Councilmember Bergy. Councilmember Beaton is on the phone, and she is trying to get in, just so you know she's in and listening.
Okay.
So. I don't know if she can be counted as present or not, but just wanted to pass along that message that she is on the phone listening.
Okay. All right. We have that. Thank you.
Okay. Yep.
Okay, Mr. Allen. Again, our public discussion tonight is an ordinance amending Section 13.12.062 entitled Sidewalk Cafe Permits in Section 5.28.037 entitled Sidewalk Cafes in the Downtown and Water Street areas of the Code of Ordinances. Good evening, Mr. Allen.
All right. Thank you, Council President Weld and members of the city council. I am before you this evening as the spokesperson on behalf of a larger group, larger team of city staff who worked over the last several weeks to put together these modifications to the current ordinance language that you'll be considering tomorrow afternoon. What has transpired the last several weeks, if not approximately a month now, is that staff with DEKI Downtown Eau Claire Inc. had heard that one of our neighbors to the east, the city of Wausau, had come up with some ideas for dealing with some of the larger summer events in their downtown that ended up having to be canceled due to the COVID-19 pandemic. They were also then trying to balance that with changes in trying to reopen a number of downtown businesses, particularly the restaurants, and they were able to come up with a plan to essentially combine their version of the "sounds like summer" Thursday evening events that we have at Phoenix Park. They have that music on the square on Wednesday nights, and they're combining that with some of the downtown restaurants and essentially closing off some streets and allowing the restaurants to spill out into those streets for that kind of modified event, but essentially taking advantage of, obviously, the wonderful summer weather that we've been having lately and expanding opportunities for that spatial distancing that's required for public health purposes with those gatherings, particularly in those restaurants that are obviously much more enclosed spaces than other locations. So with that, as a little bit of background and context, staff then proceeded to see, is there an opportunity to do something similar on a more expansive method with the downtown related to the sidewalk cafe permitting that we currently have in place? And did some research, looked at other communities throughout the state. Cities of Nina, Green Bay, and others have also taken this approach to look at some expanded opportunities for outdoor seating, particularly in the downtowns. So as a little bit of a sidebar, we kind of looked at two different approaches. One, to really focus on the downtown area and the sidewalk cafe permitting process we currently have in place, as well as looking at more of the standalone restaurants outside the downtown. And that second kind of path with the restaurants outside downtown certainly has, I would say, some more flexibility, but again, kind of having a private pad or lot, have more opportunities to spread out into an adjacent parking lot and other areas in those situations. So we did a little bit of research in that, even outside of the state of Wisconsin, and you know, essentially identified that our current codes and ordinances really are permissive enough, particularly through the site planning process and administrative approvals, to allow those outside the downtown with those kind of standalone individual lots to look at some outdoor seating opportunities. So with that, we really wanted to focus then on what can be done for those businesses, particularly again downtown and the Water Street Business Corridor, to see what can be done with those properties that don't have adjacent parking, immediately adjacent to them, simply have some on-street parking and do have sidewalks, though, and the opportunities for perhaps spreading out into the sidewalk area. So with that, I want to certainly make sure we're not losing, kind of burning daylight, as I like to say, as we all of a sudden hit the official start of summer over the weekend, and want to make sure that we can expedite and speed up the process for approving sidewalk cafe permits. So we can go through certainly line by line, but wanted to really emphasize, as shown in the Agenda Item cover sheet, that really went to emphasize expedited administrative review and approval for most applicants to these changes, expand the availability of sidewalk cafe outdoor seating space by allowing some additional expansion through neighboring property owner approval, but still retain the city council review and approval if there are some unique situations or prior violations or neighbor objections as well. So the idea is to switch it to more of a administrative kind of except-when kind of approach, so allow an administrative type of approval unless there are certain reasons and objections to bring it back before the city council, which has been the typical process for this. So with that, staff gathered an interdepartmental team, definitely a very big team with DEKI, licensing, planning, engineering, city attorney's office, health department, and of course, administration as well. So a large group of people trying to kind of problem solve this in quick order and have come up with what you see before you for consideration tomorrow afternoon. It's a little bit, it looks a little bit anticlimactic because you look at the strikeout language and the underlined added language, and it seems a little bit more mundane than the actual efforts put into it. So I wanted to make sure that those groups were identified as really helping, you know, work the specifics of this to make this actually very helpful to the downtown businesses. I should also note with that, between kind of this idea generation and what's before you for consideration tomorrow, the city manager did process under his authorization through the emergency declaration and as an emergency order, essentially allowed what is before you as a formal ordinance change as allowing that through the emergency order currently. So trying to allow those who are ready to open their doors literally and move outside to start making those plans now, so not waiting for consideration tomorrow, but essentially looking at formally codifying that in a more long-term fashion tomorrow, but still understanding that it's in effect essentially yet today. That went into effect about two and a half weeks ago, so there's been some interest in that, and it has been growing over the last several days and weeks. And with that, again, we do have a number of businesses already investigating that and actually applying for that. Through this process then too, we've updated our sidewalk cafe permit application with a new logo and fillable PDF and making it a little bit more updated and streamlined for review and make it easier for review since, again, we're looking to flip the process to make it more administrative first with alternative to go back to city council if needed. One example, or two examples, I should say, that were given very similar to that would be with the keeping of chickens and of honeybees. So it's operating very similar kind of approval process. So unless you see an objection, which we had recently for one of the keeping of chickens, unless there's an objection and from neighbors, likely will not see these types of approvals happening. And you may not see which ones are approved until you go downtown and see which ones have the sidewalk cafes in operation. So with that, again, that emergency order was a bit of a stopgap just to allow some of those businesses who are ready to get started. And again, this will be before you tomorrow afternoon. Again, several have shown interest. I don't have all the names and numbers at the moment, but also have other staff available if there are specific questions. Deputy City Engineer Leanne Ness, I believe, is on the line. Engineering has been typically responsible for processing these applications for the sidewalk cafe permits in the past. For this kind of revised process, we're going to filter them through DEKI. So our kind of development manager, Aaron White, is also on the line if there are questions with that. In fact, we've already updated, provided a sidewalk cafe landing page for, on the DEKI website, and there's links to the, to the kind of checklist of items that are needed to provide for that review and approval, a link to the new permit application, a link to the fees associated with that, and such. So we have, again, other staff available. City Attorney Steve Nick is here as well. Again, his office is in processing what you see before you in the agenda packet as well. I believe I hit all the highlights of that. I think the one in particular that is of greater interest is that, again, not just the processing and review steps in terms of being more administrative than going simply and straight to city council, but also that opportunity to essentially expand outward along a sidewalk that was not there previously with, again, permission of the neighboring property owners. So if certain businesses, for example, along Barstow, maybe it's two or three restaurants in a row, may not be able to spread out as much as other blocks where there may be a restaurant and then other retail businesses that are not restaurant-related. So to emphasize that as well, this is specifically for restaurants. So when you look at Water Street in particular, it's those who are doing 50% of war of their business in food, and so focuses on restaurants and allowing them to expand out into the sidewalk. And then, of course, there are restrictions in terms of time of day and use of alcohol that is permitted, but again, with restrictions for how that's monitored as well. Those restrictions, requirements for monitoring how the sidewalk is still open for pedestrians to walk by, none of that has changed. It's really just focusing on the approval process and then again, expanding to neighboring properties with written permission. So with that, I think I hit it all. If not, certainly can help answer any questions.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Allen. Are there any questions from council? Councilmember Gregert?
Thank you, President Weld. Actually, just spoke with Councilmember Worthman an hour ago about this question, but, and I just kind of gave a little handoff email to Mr. Allen too, but I was kind of wondering about parklets. And, you know, we've done some, I'm not sure if it'd be called a pilot of a parklet down by Olson's Ice Cream on South Barstow Street last fall, and I guess I was wondering how this, you know, how the decision on, obviously, that would be an expansion of something like this, but is, are parklets allowed, and is there currently a way for businesses to do that? And how does that kind of relate to some of the flexibilities we're adding here? Because essentially, a parklet is in a, in a public parking space along the street, is my understanding, and there's probably some standards with regard to barricades or protection for people using those parklets as a seating area for a restaurant, but it would be good to dive into that a little bit since it's related.
Sure. Thank you, Councilmember Gregert. That's a good reminder as well that backing up, looking at that Wausau example, you know, they've gone to the extent of closing off a couple of city blocks, more like a special event approach. We, we were challenged by city manager Peters to look at what would, what would happen if we closed off several blocks of Barstow Street, for example? And so that question actually was, was broached to the South Barstow bid and a number of others out there in the area, and most of the business owners weren't quite ready to take that leap to closing off streets. The kind of the intermediary, as you're noting, was related to parklets, looking at perhaps closing off some, some parking spots out front. That too asked that question of a number of the businesses, and that too, there seemed to be more of an interest in retaining some of that on-street parking and concerns about, again, through traffic and such as well. So kind of taking the kind of baby steps here and looking at expanding along the sidewalk first rather than starting to go further into the public right-of-way. With that, if Ms. Ness is available on the line, she may want to respond to some of her research and work that she's been putting together on a, say, a new parklet ordinance, but looking at some options as a result of that pilot project. I think that's a good way to call it, a pilot project from last year out in front of Olson's. So, if Ms. Ness is available.
Good evening, Ms. Ness. Are you there?
Yes. Good evening. Can you hear me?
We can.
Wonderful. We have been working, last year, we did a pilot, as you had mentioned, with a parklet in a parking location, a parking, well, it's not a parking stall, it's a no-parking area located on South Barstow Street, just north of Eau Claire Street. And we had feedback, both positive and negative, related to that. And moving forward, there, there's some discussions that we need to have internally with the different departments, with the transit line in relationship to transit stops with the businesses in the downtown business districts on their support for expanding into the parking stalls. But as Mr. Allen had mentioned, at this time, the majority of the businesses responding to the DEKI survey really did not have a strong interest in entering into the parklets at this time.
Councilmember Worthman?
Thank you, Council President. Can you hear me?
We can. Yep.
Yeah, so I appreciate Councilmember McGregor's question on that. I had seen some other communities that have looked at using parking spaces, parklets to expand business opportunity, and then even some communities that have looked at closing streets to further expand business opportunity. And that was the question I had originally wanted to ask about, and I appreciate the follow-up on that, Mr. Allen and Ms. Ness. My other question was related to the permit fee for this sidewalk cafe permit. Do you know offhand what that amount is?
Thank you, Councilmember Worthman. There are different types of permits, with and without alcohol, renewal permits, fees as well, since they're, again, this is existing sidewalk cafe permit process, so we actually did have several last year. They range from $42 just for a simple renewal without alcohol, up to $238 for a new permit with alcohol. So that's, that's kind of the range, and there are a few.
Sort of a range.
Yeah, there are a few gradations within that. Yep.
Okay. Somewhere between $42 to $240?
Yeah, $238, yes.
$238?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. That's helpful.
Sure, and that's the most expensive, again, that's a new permit with alcohol. We have new permit, new permit with alcohol, renewal, renewal with alcohol, and renewal with new alcohol. I mean, if you're now transitioning from a previous permit without alcohol to one with, so five different types of permits.
Okay. Can I ask a follow-up?
Certainly.
Is, is, you know, I, I wonder if we have heard any feedback about whether that amount has been prohibited or whether that seems like it's just part of, you know, doing business and that's an okay amount for businesses that are applying for this?
It's a good question. I don't know if Mr. White is available on the line with DEKI and economic development, but he is the one who, again, his, his department was able to do a lot of the kind of outreach and surveying of business owners. So I have not heard anything specific to the permit fees, but maybe he could answer that.
Certainly. Mr. White, are you there?
Yes, I am here. Can you hear me?
We can. Thank you.
Absolutely. We haven't heard any feedback from the, from the businesses who have been applying either way. Nobody has come up and said that they're concerned about the fee schedule. They've all been very happy that under the emergency order, those who apply through tomorrow are actually, the fees aren't being waived. They've been very appreciative of that, but I don't think the, the fee level has been a deterrent to anybody in any significant way.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. White. Are there any other questions from council, from Mr. Allen or Ms. Ness or Mr. White? Council Vice President Emmanuel?
Thank you, Council President Weld, and good evening to all the council members and city staff.
Good evening.
I wanted to ask a couple of questions. The first one is around, I think this would be a pretty common question we would get asked, of why is this only downtown? And are there already provisions for businesses that might be in other locations of the city? And the second question is, I see that the language in the proposed changes is that this is granting temporary approval and having administrative approval certainly does allow a little bit more nimbleness. I'm wondering even when we, when we get through COVID, if you anticipate that this would resume council approval or if this is making an indefinite change.
Thank you, Vice President Emmanuel. Starting with your second question first, again, it is a formal ordinance change, and I'm sure the city attorney Nick could correct me if I'm wrong, but it would make it a permanent change so that this would be the way we would operate with our sidewalk cafe permits moving into the future, again, unless there would be an interest in, you know, rescinding this later or changing the language back. So let's say it's temporary, the emergency order is temporary, but the ordinance change is permanent. The, the permits are issued on an annual basis, so let's say it's temporary in that, it's a, again, a permit for the 2020 year versus 2021. So obviously, there would be an opportunity to revisit this for 2021 if need be. The other question related to other businesses outside of downtown, that was, again, kind of a second path that we were researching because, again, those outside of downtown don't have the benefit of a sidewalk cafe permit system or process or opportunity, which is, again, looking at, we looked at for downtown, closing the streets, parklets, and then the sidewalk cafe permit expansion is what before you here today and tomorrow. But outside of downtown, we looked at what processes we had in place or what processes we'd have to create to allow similar situation to occur, and it appears as though, again, through the research that we've been doing, under the current code, particularly zoning code with site plan review, much of that could be even handled administratively. So let's say, you know, a standalone restaurant would want to expand out into their parking lot, they could do so simply by revising their site plan. We looked at over 100 restaurants, not individually, but there are over 100 restaurants in the city of Eau Claire, and a majority of those have the benefit of a site plan that they could modify even just temporarily. But again, the way these are operating, and these are essentially permanent changes that would have to then be modified back in a permanent fashion later on. So if that answers the question, those questions?
Council President, if I may, then ask a follow-up question?
Certainly.
Okay, thank you. Well, thank you, Mr. Allen. Appreciate the information and, and also just all of the research. It's really impressive, not just, you know, local municipalities who are doing it as our Wisconsin neighbors, but really looking nationwide. So thank you for helping to look under each stone to make sure we can bring forth the best product for our community.
best product for our community. So just a hypothetical question, and I promise, nobody has contacted me from this hypothetical location, so I'm going to talk about Banbury. So let's say hypothetically, somebody inside Banbury had a business that they wanted to do outside. They could, and maybe this is a little challenging, because there's one business owner of Banbury, but maybe they could work with the person who owns Banbury and then come before city, and then review the site plan, and then would be allowed to serve, let's say, in the parking lot. Or thinking about some businesses that are a little bit more on the south side, or maybe by Mall Drive, that have kind of cafe-type restaurants. So their process would be then to come to city staff and then do, ask for, and basically submit a site plan revision, is that correct?
In the most basic sense, yes, that's correct. As you mentioned hypothetically, Banbury might be a little different in just how that is all, I guess, physically structured there. And another thing too, going back to the comment about temporary versus permanent, there may, I guess, semantics, temporary is, coming back to that, is the sidewalk cafe approach. Permanent, in terms of the changes that one may make to their business operations, would be more like an outdoor patio. And so there's, there are different provisions for that. So we're not looking at addressing outdoor patios, which would have fencing, egress situations and things like that. So just to clarify, kind of that language, temporary, in terms of, there's ordinance making it permanent, but temporary in terms of a sidewalk cafe is a temporary setup, whereas a patio is a permanent installation. So there's a difference there. So if we're talking, you know, even outside of the downtown, you think of even just a number of the fast food, or, you know, fast casual businesses that have outdoor seating areas, those are permanent typically, their patio with fencing and permanent fixtures in place. We're really talking about a temporary seasonal type situation, where somebody may have some just tables and planters and such outside, both either on the sidewalk, sidewalk in the downtown, or perhaps in a parking lot outside of the downtown. Just to make sure we're speaking kind of the same language in terms of permanent versus temporary.
Sure.
And structural, so. City Attorney Nick is waiting in the wings.
Okay. City Attorney Nick is-
Thank you. Yeah, sorry for that, Scott, but it's a, it's a little bit different dynamic with our, our seating arrangement to try to step forward, as opposed to just putting my light on, so I didn't mean to infringe on your space over there in the wings. If I could to further respond, thank you, Council President. There's one ordinance amendment that we put before you, but note that there's two ordinances being amended. So we're dealing with the 1312062 sidewalk cafe permit, so that's the process of giving permission seasonally for someone to operate restaurant seating in a portion of the public right-of-way. The sidewalk, most typically, but certainly, to an earlier question, there's an ability to handle parklets in the future as well. It may come forward as a future amendment, or it can be done by that sort of pilot process through approval through our engineering division. So that's one aspect of it, is just giving a business permission to operate in our right-of-way. The temporary language that you see in the ordinance that Councilmember Emmanuel was referencing then is further down in the ordinance amendment, and that now amends in Section Two a different ordinance. That's 528037, and that now is dealing with alcohol licenses. And so the temporary reference there is as, is to differentiate it from a permanent expansion. And as soon as you go permanent expansion, now to change it, you've got to actually non-renew or actually start a revocation process under Chapter 125 under the alcohol laws, so we don't want to do that. So it extends a temporary expansion of the ability to serve alcohol, somewhat like what we do for a special event, but seasonally. And then finally, to answer the hypothetical that Councilmember Emmanuel posed, actually, all of this is typically much easier if it's on private property, because then it's not usually an expansion at all. It depends how that business defined its premise, but if a business came in originally and applied for an alcohol license over not only their building, but their parking lot, which is common, then if they want to hold an event out in their parking lot, oftentimes they don't have to do anything. It would just get into the issue that Mr. Allen indicated of whether a site plan might be amended. If, however, their alcohol premise did not extend out into their parking lot, that's where you will see, and you do regularly on your agendas, see those temporary expansion requests, where they're holding a special event, some, you know, you'll see WAMFest every year or something like that, where they're, they're holding some type of special event on private property, and they just need council approval to expand the premise. So two different things in play there, permission to function in the right-of-way, that's typically only needed in our downtown areas, where they have zero setback buildings most often, and then treatment of the alcohol license in the second section there in 528.
Thank you for the clarification, Mr. Nick. Council Vice President, did you have any other question?
Yes, thank you so much, and thanks for permitting me to ask an additional question. Thank you, Mr. Nick, and again, Mr. Allen, for your thoughtful and helpful responses. My last question is, if somebody could please check with the fee structure again, and for this first year, is it possible, and I apologize if you already said this, but is it possible to have the fees prorated to, I don't know, maybe 25% off or something like that, since we're just about a fourth of the way into this April 1 calendar year?
And this is, yeah, City Attorney, City Attorney Nick. It sounds weird to self-introduce myself like that. Sorry, excuse me. Yeah, by executive order, as Aaron White indicated earlier, the current year applicant's fees are waived, which is typically something you all would have to do as city council, but under the emergency authorities vested currently in the city manager, he has the ability to do and has signed that. So individuals need to get those applications in, as Mr. White indicated, by tomorrow under that emergency order, but if they, if they apply, and really, the tomorrow was based on, that's the current duration of the emergency order, but if you'll have a motion, you'll have a resolution in front of you tomorrow to extend it, so if you choose to extend it, that deadline would also likely be extended. So they're, they're waived entirely for this year, given the pandemic and the great adjustments business and all of us have had to make, and the fees that in your fee and license schedule would pick up again in 2021, unless you legislatively change them when you review fee and licenses during the budget process in this fall, October and November.
Sure. Thank you, City Attorney Nick. Are there any other questions? Councilmember Worthman, do you have another question? No. I don't see any other questions, Mr. Allen. Thank you both for your presentation, and to Mr. White and to Ms. Ness, thank you for your input. That closes, I'm sorry, this is a public hearing, and if there is anyone that wishes to speak to this agenda item, please raise your hand or click on the icon on WebEx to And I am not seeing anyone there. And with that, we will close the public hearing and move on to our public comment period. And for those of you that wish to speak this evening during the public comment period, please click on the icon to raise your hand. I will call you in the order in which they appear on my screen. Please state your name and the city of Eau Claire address. Public comment period is for those living or working in the city of Eau Claire. Is there anyone that wishes to speak during the public comment period? And I am not seeing any names registered or any call-ins at this point. Not seeing anyone there for the public comment period. With that, I want to thank everyone for joining us this evening, both from home and remotely, and those councilmembers here in chambers and staff members as well. And again, if anyone has questions in regards to any of this, again, you're welcome to email or call. And with that, if there is no objection from council, we are adjourned. Thank you. Have a great night, everybody.
Eau Claire City Council meeting is now in session. Please stand for the flag. I am President of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, and to this world with liberty and justice for all.
Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Anderson. Beaton.
Here.
Bergy.
Here.
Christopherson.
Here.
Emmanuel.
Yes.
Gregert.
Here.
Klinkhammer.
Here.
Lor.
Here.
Weld.
Here.
Worthman.
Present.
Jong.
Here.
Thank you, and good afternoon, and welcome to those that are joining us on WebEx, and those that are participating with our meeting remotely, and those of us in chambers too. It's, it's Tuesday, June 23, and this is our legislative session of the Eau Claire City Council. Thank you to the residents again that participated last night as well. During a legislative session this afternoon, the council members will be participating either remotely or in person to deliberate and take action on the agenda items before us today. City staff and council members have spent a great deal of time preparing for this meeting, and I have sincere appreciation for their continued work and dedication to this community. I also want to thank Valley Media Works and their staff for live streaming this meeting. To watch, please visit valleymediaworks.org or visit Channel 994 on Spectrum Cable. First item of business is the COVID-19 update from City Manager Peters. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Welcome, and thank you for the opportunity to just bring you up to speed a little bit on what's been happening in the last two weeks as it relates to COVID-19 in the city of Eau Claire. So a couple of things, just that are going to repeat that you've heard before, but I think it's important to mention, that the best place for information on where we're at and how we're doing locally with COVID-19 is the Information Hub. If you just type in "Eau Claire" and "Information Hub," you will go to a website that has a tremendous amount of information, including metrics and data and statistics. You can also learn more about where we're at with the live updates that are conducted by the Health Department at 3:30 on Mondays and Fridays, and there's also a call center that's available for people at 831-7425. And then, of course, also on Facebook is information. If you do go to that website, you will see that there are some metrics that are in place, they are evaluated each week, they essentially look at how well we're doing with COVID-19 in three major areas. One, the occurrence of the disease and where it's at in the community, also how we're doing with testing and the capacity of our healthcare system, as well as how is the capacity of our public health system to manage the situation. This is updated once a week. What you see in front of you is last week's, the data is pulled Monday night into Tuesday, and then that information is used to update the, the status by the end of Tuesday, so actually sometime after this presentation, it does get updated. But it's a really good place to get a snapshot of how we're doing in those metrics of disease occurrence, testing and healthcare, and also how the public health capacity is in dealing with it. Also, you would find on that website a plan that was put together at the local level called our Respond Together Plan. This is a roadmap of when and how various community activities can move more safely to reopening, and it's a document that is guiding, is guided by the, the data and the statistics that are on the other measures that I just pointed out. In terms of the community itself and things that we've done in the last two weeks, the restaurant and dining, we, we did move forward with some sidewalk cafe and outdoor dining approval processes, as well as some alcohol expansions administratively. Those are actually on your, the sidewalk cafe is on your agenda for tonight, you had a public hearing on it last night. And we also revamped and looked at how we can work with citywide temporary site expansions for businesses that want to expand outside, and they're not downtown, and they wouldn't be expanding onto public property, but they would be, or right-of-way, but they'd be expanding onto their own private properties, so we've been expediting that as well. In addition, in we, in working with the Express, we've waived their capital campaign contributions for this year, since they're not having any games and revenue and, and some challenges there, that's been postponed for a year. We also extended the reduced fares and forgiven parking fees that are being waived, that had been for the month of April and May, for the month of June, and we have waived the sidewalk cafe permit fees for those that are applying to have sidewalk cafes this year. In addition to that, and just in terms of other work that's going on, the Economic Recovery Task Force is really coming up to speed and charging ahead with lots of good work. They're working hard to support the, the Public Health Department and our Incident Command System in terms of the health orders and getting that out to the various industries. They have their own website that's got a tremendous amount of information on it. They started a decal program where employers or businesses can sign up and commit to following the guidelines that are in place in Eau Claire County, and then they receive a decal that says that they're committed to those public health safety standards, and they're committed to improving and keeping good health for their, for their, the people that are coming in their business and their employees. And I think currently we're at about 180, pushing almost 200 businesses that have done that, and just today, on the website is a neat little map that actually you can go on, and you can see all the businesses that have signed up for that decal program. The Economic Development Recovery Task Force is also working on promotion of masks and trying to help our community have a better culture for the use of masks. Masks are one of the very best ways to prevent the spread of the disease, and, and we know that that's a very important thing to have in the business community. In terms of our facility status updates, not a whole lot of change from two weeks ago, and we're not going to go through the list, but essentially, all of our facilities are open, our playing fields are available for practice but not for games, and our park shelters are available as long as they're being used in compliance with the, the health order. In terms of our office spaces, they are now open to the public by appointment from 9:00 to 11:00 and 2:00 to 4:00. We are trying to emphasize very strongly to continue the online services, and the employees, as they're returning, are returning in small groups that don't overlap, and we have implemented a policy within City Hall where if you are traveling through the building to an office or to your meeting, you must wear a mask, although once you're in your meeting space, if you have maintained the safe distance, then you can, can take the mask off. But to travel through the building for employees or for our guests, you must wear the mask. So really, we're left with just one facility that's closed, and that's still our drinking fountains. So the drinking fountains outside still remain closed at this point in time. In terms of the, just a couple other things, in terms of the impact of the update, you know, we're, we're still supporting strongly and heavily the, the public health order. Operationally, we are still making some adjustments and evaluating how things are working with City Hall. As I said before, that's by appointment, and you must wear a mask when you come in the building. Public meetings continue to be happening on a remote basis, but I'll talk about that in just a minute. And I believe, starting tomorrow or later this week, our Police Department, which had been going to, had moved to 12-hour shifts for the last couple of months, is moving back to their regular 10-hour shifts. And in terms of financial impacts, we are still working hard to evaluate the new grants and the grant programs that are coming down, so that we can seek as much reimbursement as we possibly can through those grant programs. In terms of next steps, of course, we want to remain flexible to the changing conditions and the- and the orders as they change. Be prepared if there is a surge in our community. Make operational adjustments as we can. Continue to support the Economic Development Recovery Task Force work and work within the emergency order extension, which we're going to talk a little bit more about in a minute. In terms of the emergency order and the rationale for asking for another extension, and this would move the extension through July 28th, there's really several points or reasons that we believe it's appropriate to extend the emergency order. One is that the Hobs, which is currently being used as a temporary shelter, is tied to the emergency order. I would like everybody to know that we are working hard to find an alternate site. We recognize that there's activity that can now otherwise be allowed in that facility, and plans are in play to move that temporary facility to another facility by mid-July. So it's anticipated that within this next emergency period, we will be moving that temporary shelter to another location. Remote meetings for City Council is also tied to the emergency order, and we are working, we have a plan now to reconfigure the council chambers to meet some safety guidelines, and that is expected to be in place and ready to go for the second meeting in July. As was noted last night in the public hearing, the sidewalk cafe fees are waived as long as the emergency order is in order. And then finally, it just provides for a few things. It's not very frequent anymore, but occasionally, we have issues that are just timely, that need to be addressed. And just, this is an example, today, we learned that one of our polling sites is withdrawing because of concerns with COVID-19, but the state, the deadline for approval to send that into the state is actually before your next council meeting. So it kind of puts us in a bind under the emergency declaration, and I'm able to do that in place of the council, and we're able to be nimble and adaptive. And again, that's just a small example, but those kinds of examples are still coming up from time to time. In addition to those four points for rationale for extending the order, is really the support for the local health order itself. And, you know, having legislative support to, I guess, confirm that it is necessary to have a public health response. We do want to have a public health response that helps us to avoid overwhelming the medical capacity in our area. It also provides and helps with the contract tracing, should somebody within a circle, you know, contract, connect, you know, have COVID-19. And of course, it's also a local health order that is based upon our local conditions. The current health order runs from June 11th to June 24th, and it was going to be evaluated. You know, it's been done in two-to-four-week extensions, and it currently requires that all individuals comply with physical safe distancing of six feet. It requires that if there's indoor spaces, that there's occupancy of 144 square feet per household unit. It limits gatherings of 50 people indoors and 100 people outdoors, and of course, it recommends that travel and keeping circles and connections as small as you possibly can. This order has been evaluated from the health perspective and the Health Department every two weeks, and it's going to be, again, evaluated, you know, later, later this week. So part of the emergency order that you have before you, though, provides legislative support for that, for that emergency order. Just in terms of a couple of final thoughts, though, about COVID-19, this is a marathon. It really is, and nobody likes this. And quite frankly, I believe all of us are getting tired, and we would love to have it be over, but it's not. It is something that is going to be continuing for some time. It's going to be in our life, and we really cannot afford to ease up, and we can't afford to let our guard down. COVID-19 is very opportunistic, and it's exponential. And to understand exponential growth is to understand how quickly things can get out of control. And if you've done any of those, those things where, you know, you see somebody that, "I'll double your penny every day," right, and then you're multimillionaire right by day 30, and, you know, the power of exponential growth is really quite phenomenal, and when you talk about a pandemic, can be, can be very overwhelming. And so, you know, it's really important that we still stay vigilant, and, because frankly, by the time it becomes urgent and hospitals are overwhelmed, it's too late. I mean, we're behind the curve then at that point if we let the hospitals get overwhelmed. We have had success in this community. We've had very good success, and we've had some good luck as well, but we've been using a strategic, data-driven, and very controlled approach. And I understand there is pressure to relax, but I just feel it's very important that we continue to stay the course and be data-driven and to be strategic in how we go about this. You know, sometimes it's hard to appreciate the pain or the sadness that you don't experience, and so we can look around and say, "Well, it's not happening here, so maybe we don't need to take the approaches that we are." But when you, when you look at other communities, and they have the spikes or they have things that start to go out of control, you know, it creates fear. And if you have a large expansion or a very fast expansion, it creates fear in the community. And that takes from the business community and our social connections and all of our opportunities, and it sets us backwards. So I think it's very important that we're measured and careful about how we go forward so that we don't find ourselves in a situation where we're overwhelmed. So how do we do that? Well, the keys to that are really to stay the course, be data-driven, be strategic, and focus on really three things: wearing masks, keeping distance between one another, and stay in your small groups. Those are the best practices, and there's a lot of other things around it, but if we can wear our masks when we're with other people, keep the distance, and keep the small groups, we will continue the success that we're having. So my ask is that with a lot of grace and respect, that each of us lead by example, and for those of us that are in leadership positions, that we lead with policies and procedures that put the safety of people first. So that's my update for you today, and I'd certainly be open to any questions you might have.
Thank you. Thank you, City Manager Peters. Is there any questions from council? Council Vice President Emanuel.
Thank you so much, Council President Weld. I do have a question and probably another, certainly another question once we actually vote on this, but one question around the idea of all of this work being a marathon, which I totally agree with, wholeheartedly, and I agree with the science, I agree with Kristin Polkowski, all of that, and I think that this has been an important tool for our team. Have it at our disposal, at disposal, and that we have used it. I'm wondering, from your perspective, City Manager, as you are in a marathon, how long do you foresee an emergency order to continue being extended, knowing that we're probably going to be coexisting with COVID and the unknown for 12, 18 months? I mean, hopefully, not that long, but it could be that long, so.
I think that's going to be.
Do you have any vision for the emergency order?
Yeah. Excellent question. Let me just get my crystal ball out here and peer into it. That is, that is a very good question. It's going to be, it's going to depend on the data, and it's going to depend on the, you know, I mean, we've got the metrics now, we have the way of measuring, and I think it's going to depend on the, on really where we go. And, you know, I think, you know, every month that goes on, we learn more about the disease, we learn more about how to control it, we learn more about how to treat it, and, you know, we learn more about, you know, just about the disease in general. So I wish I had a clear answer for you, but I really think we need to take it, in this case, you know, month by month, and evaluate the data and let the data drive our decisions to decide, you know, where we go next.
Are there any other questions from council? I don't see any. Thank you, Mr. Peters.
Thank you.
Hi. Oh, Council President. Well, just Captain, may I ask a follow-up or additional if no other questions are there?
Certainly, go ahead. There's no other questions.
Okay. Thanks a lot. Thank you so much for that, Mr. Peters. Appreciate that, and I'm very sensitive that nobody has a crystal ball with this, and that would help for me to hear your month-to-month approach, so thank you. Couple other questions. With City Hall reopening, are you envisioning that, if possible, that city employees will still be able to have some type of teleworking? And if so, how, you know, do you see that going on kind of indefinitely, or what does that look like? And then the second part is around council chambers being reopened and reconfigured. Are you anticipating making a suggestion that remote attendance is still an option that council would have, totally knowing that council gets to have that final decision, but just wondering what your thoughts are on that?
Sure. To the first one, actually, we're still encouraging as much remote work as can be done, so we're rotating out in such a way that we have really the minimal staffing here at the building to be able to address people's in-person needs. But to the extent that people can and are interested in still working remotely, we are encouraging and supportive of that. And frankly, I see that that will continue really until there is a effective treatment for COVID-19 or a vaccine. So that is probably our new normal, is having rotations with small groups, trying to minimize the overlap of employees in the building at any one time. And that's really to protect our continuity of work. If, you know, when, when somebody does contract the disease, you know, anybody who's had contact with that individual then needs to also be quarantined. And so, you know, the, we want to minimize that and minimize the number of contacts that people have. So, yeah, we fully expect that the ability to remote work and encouraging the remote work, when we can still get the work done and serve the citizens, is something we want to continue, again, until, until there's a treatment or a vaccine. In terms of the council chambers, really, again, the ability for the council to work, to have their meetings remotely is tied to the emergency order or the declaration. It is really our goal to just have it as an option for the council to meet as a whole in person. It really will be, I think, a conversation and a discussion the council needs to have in terms of what, you know, where you want to go with that going forward. But, but we want to provide a physical space that meets health and safety guidelines for you to meet in person. I think our preference would be, you know, default at some point to have the council be able to meet face-to-face again. I think there's, there's certain benefits to that ability of interacting together. There are certain benefits to when a resident wants to speak to the council, to be able to actually, you know, see the council face-to-face. So I think there's, there's a lot of advantages to being face-to-face, and we think that that is the preferred way to meet, and we want to establish that as a, at least as a physical environment, but we understand at the end of the day, that will be a decision up to the council.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Mr. Peters? Councilmember Anderson.
Yes, thank you very much, City Manager, for this really thoughtful explanation of all that's been happening with COVID-19 in our community. Just a couple of really kind of quick questions. One is, you mentioned that there is a decal map of, available on the website. I wasn't sure if that was on the hub or if it was on the Economic Recovery Task Force website, so if you could send a link, that would be really helpful.
Sure.
And then the second one was, we, some of us had received a question in our inboxes regarding specifically the parks policy. You mentioned that you're open for practice but not games, and I wonder if you could just talk a little bit more about the rationale for that?
Sure. So first, the decal map, which, again, just in a meeting this morning, it was going to be put on live, so I'm hopeful it's there, but it's, it's at the hub, and the hub also then gets you to the task force work site, so, but it will be with the task force, but it's also going to be linked to the chambers website and also to the Visit Eau Claire's website. That might not be done exactly today, but you should be able to find it in any of those three places. So the games, as was mentioned, you know, people are able to practice, but they can't play games, and frankly, it comes down to the six-foot distancing and being able to do things where people that are not in the same family unit need to stay six feet apart. And it's, you know, you can't have a game with, without people being closer than six feet together, and so it really, it's tied to the, to the health order, and it's, you know, most specifically, that piece of the health order, which, you know, you can't comply with that part of the health order and still conduct a game. But let me just see if there's anything that Mr. Pippin would want to add to that. Nope, he just gave me the thumbs up. So that, that's the, that's where we're at with, with the softball and the baseball games. On a, on a related note to that, the, you know, we're learning more and more each day and each week of different leagues, both here and around the state, that are canceling their, their play going forward. So frankly, you know, much of the opportunity for, for play is probably diminishing or going away just because the leagues themselves are, you know, deciding that it's not safe to be playing the games.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Councilmember Worthman.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, City Manager Peters, for the update. Wanted to ask about what the prevalence of testing is, because I've heard different things about what's available and who can get testing, you know, if that's happening. Wonder if you could just touch on that briefly?
So we continue to increase access to testing, and the Health Department is working regularly with the various, you know, healthcare providers to be able to have testing. You know, at this point, you know, it's my understanding that, you know, people who need and want, you know, a test should be able to get it in the community. So if, if you're hearing otherwise or have some other, you know, situations, feel free to reach out to me and pass those along. You know, as you know, a few weeks ago, we had that onsite drive-up testing that was hosted by the National Guard, but, you know, testing is something that we recognize as important and continue to want to have, you know, available and have, have people have access to it.
Thank you. It was just around the idea that some healthcare providers were, I heard, only providing tests for people that were presenting symptoms or said that they had been in contact potentially, but not necessarily providing testing. For example, you know, if I, if someone is going to go see an elderly parent or something like that and wanted to double-check and make sure that that testing wasn't available for them, so I just wanted to understand that, in fact, anyone in Eau Claire right now could go to a healthcare provider and get a test done.
So actually, Councilmember Worthman, and I'm just looking to see if Ms. Naskizi is here, and she had planned to be here but was running late. So if I could, because I want to make sure that I speak accurately about, about that, that detail for you, let me, let me circle back, and we will send you some, some information on the status of that component of testing that you raised.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council? I don't see any. Thank you, Mr. Peters.
Thank you.
The next agenda item is our consent agenda. Do council members have questions regarding the consent agenda or wish to remove an item for separate consideration? Seeing none, then on a motion by council member. Seeing none, then on a motion by Councilmember Anderson and seconded by Councilmember Klinkhammer, the consent agenda has been moved and discussion is in order. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Anderson? Beaton?
Aye.
Bergy?
Aye.
Christopherson?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Gregert?
Aye.
Klinkhammer?
Aye.
Lor?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman? Zhang?
Aye.
And the consent agenda passes unanimously. We have one proclamation this afternoon in regards to Parks and Recreation Month, and if I could have Mr. Pipinger join me up at the podium. Good afternoon.
So we're here to recognize and celebrate Parks and Recreation Month, which obviously this is a year with a lot of challenges, but we continue to work forward and move forward and look forward to continued events and opportunities. So it reads as follows: Whereas parks and recreation programs are an integral part of communities throughout this country, including the city of O'Clare, and our parks and recreation are vitally important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our communities, ensuring the health of our citizens, and contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of a community and region. And parks and recreation programs build healthy, active communities that aid in the prevention of chronic disease, provide therapeutic recreation services for those who are mentally or physically disabled, and also the mental and emotional health of all citizens. And whereas parks and recreation programs increase a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of the local tax base, increased tourism, the attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction. And parks and recreation areas are fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community and serve to improve water quality, protect groundwater, prevent flooding, improve the quality of air we breathe, provide vegetative buffers to development, and produce habitat for wildlife. And our parks and natural recreation areas ensure ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors. And whereas the U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month, and the city of O'Clare recognizes the benefits derived from parks and recreation resources, now therefore I, Terry Weld, President of the O'Clare City Council, on behalf of the entire city council, hereby proclaim the month of July as Parks and Recreation Month, and encourage the citizens of this community to join together in recognizing that parks and recreation services are essential to the quality of life, not only in July, but all through the year. Mr. Pipinger, thank you.
Thank you. Certainly, we all know how important our parks are to the city of O'Clare. We have over 1,000 acres of park and open space land in the city, over 34 miles of trails, and certainly, it's enjoyable to see them being used as much as they are this year, because it really is a mental health release, stress relief that we're seeing. But besides all those amenities that we have, we also provide hundreds of recreational programming for the citizens of O'Clare and outside also. And that has been something that has been impacted significantly through this COVID time. And, you know, our plan is to try to open up some of those programs this year, that we can do so in a safe manner. But we, the programming goes all the way from the Hobbs Ice Arena to our soccer fields, to our ball fields, to our sports fields. And those are certainly important aspects to our community, and our hope is that we'll be able to open those up. But we have some wonderful professionals within our organization that are very dedicated to that cause. And certainly, you know, normally, on a normal year, we have a tremendous amount of programming going on right now. It's a little different this year. But we are looking at sometime in July that we're going to put, provide some summer fun kits that can be used by folks that are in our sponsorship program, especially at the Fairfax Pool, that they'll be able to use on the outside rather than have it to come together as a group. So that's something that we're going to be putting on soon. We'd like to see the pool full, we'd like to see all of our parks full and all of our programming full, but this is an unusual year. It will be back next year. So I thank you for this.
Thank you. Thank you, all of your staff.
All right, we will move forward with our business agenda and introduce agenda item number 18, which is a resolution. A resolution authorizing operating capital budget appropriations for fiscal year 2020. Because this item amends the budget, a two-thirds vote or eight affirmative votes is needed for passage. Good afternoon, Ms. Basin.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
We can.
Perfect. Before you, this evening, a resolution authorizing second quarter budget appropriations. The first section outlines appropriations in the amount of $12,500 for the library for various grants and donations, $61,000 for the Hazmat Fund for a grant, and $1,469,800 for the Health Department for various grants and donations. The second portion is a reappraisal of funds, capital funds. This reappraisal is for $105,000 from the Hobbs Acter Rick for a replacement program to the Fairfax Pool capital program. This is to cover the costs associated with fixing the leak that we recently noticed. And with that, I would take any questions.
Does council have any questions for Ms. Basin? I don't see any. Thank you.
Thank you.
On a motion then by Councilmember Beaton and seconded by Councilmember Zhang, this item is moved. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Beaton? Bergy? Christopherson?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Gregert?
Aye.
Klinkhammer?
Aye.
Lor?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Zhang?
Aye.
Anderson?
And that item passes unanimously. Agenda item number 19 is a resolution approving the renewal of a contract with the Wisconsin Department of Agriculture, Agriculture, Trade, and Consumer Protection to provide local enforcement of regulation provisions on above-ground and underground petroleum tanks by the fire department. Good afternoon, Deputy Chief Berchang.
Good afternoon. So what we're asking for permission for is to renew a contract with the state of Wisconsin to do inspections of storage tanks for fuel. We've been doing these for many years. This involves annual inspections of existing tanks within the city of O'Clare, as well as inspections for removal of tanks, for installation of tanks, and when tanks are upgraded. There is a change this year in that the state made a change from inspecting tanks that are 1,000 gallons or more to now doing tanks that are 5,000 gallons or more only. So there will be a change in the number of tank inspections that we're doing, as well as a change in the amount of revenue that comes in from those inspections. Last year, our normal annual inspection total was 57 tanks, and we are forecasting only doing 26 tanks for 2020. That can change a little bit if there are new installations or removals throughout the year, but is not likely to change very much. Otherwise, it's pretty much the same program we've been doing for many, many years. The benefits also are that it gives us an opportunity to know what tanks exist within our community, if the fire department is doing it. It gives us an opportunity to ensure that there's no adverse environmental effects due to leaking tanks, and it also gives us the ability to ensure that there are no adverse health effects to the people in our community should tanks be leaking. So I see it as a benefit to us as a community.
Great. Thank you. Councilmember Worthman, did you have a question?
Yeah, thank you, Council President. Thank you, Deputy Chief. Wanted to ask, just from my understanding, is that because the state has increased the size of tank that needs to be inspected, then we're not likely to see any businesses or other actually request to have their tank inspected that are underneath that 5,000-gallon size? I mean, I'm assuming they could, but we expect that since the regulation doesn't require them to, that we don't, we won't see that request?
My expectation is that we wouldn't see very many of those, although, as you said, they still could request it, and we could still do an inspection upon their request. And we'd be more than happy to do that.
Okay. Thanks for that.
Any other questions for Councilmember Christopherson?
Thank you, Council President. Deputy Chief, you shared with me, and I wonder if you would share with the public, how is it that this change was made in the requirements?
It was recognized at the state level. There was contradictory information, and based on state statute, the requirement is only that 5,000 gallons be inspected. There are groups that are working at the state level to try to get this change back statutorily, and we would certainly support doing that and would be a part of doing that if that change is, again, made.
May I have a follow-up?
Certainly.
I wonder also, are there ways that the community would be able to support that movement or that move? I think there are a lot of people in our community that are concerned about the environmental impact of leaking. How would you suggest that we support that?
Well, certainly, if there's a recognized problem, then that's something that we could handle at that time when there's a hazard that's identified. We also continue to do routine fire inspections throughout the community, and that is not going to change. Many of the businesses that we would normally do a tank inspection on, we're also doing routine fire inspections on. So we are seeing these locations once or twice a year already as well, but we may be there looking at a more broad view of the business from all safety standpoints. But should we recognize that hazard exists while we're there, we can still address it at that time.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Are there any other questions?
I don't see any. Thank you, Deputy Chief.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
On a motion then by Councilmember Lor and seconded by Councilmember Christopherson, this item is moved. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Bergy?
Aye.
Christopherson?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Gregert? Klinkhammer?
Aye.
Lor?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Zhang?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
And that item passes unanimously. Agenda item number 20 is a resolution approving an intergovernmental cooperative agreement between the city of O'Clare, O'Clare County, Chippewa County, Town of Union, and the Town of Wheaton for the official mapping of County Highway T Corridor, State Highway 312 to State Highway 29. Good afternoon, Mr. Solberg.
Good afternoon, Council President Weld. The resolution before you today approves the city of O'Clare's participation in the official mapping project for County Trunk Highway T. There is a location map in the county pack, in the council packet materials. It starts at State Trunk Highway 312, which is a north crossing and extends north the Highway 29. And what the official mapping process is, it's an evaluation of alternatives for a capacity expansion of this highway, where access would occur, how a future highway would look, and then it identifies the right-of-way that would be required for a future expansion. It's not a construction project, it's not a design project, it's the first step to try and get all the stakeholders on board with the future use of this highway. I'd like to thank the O'Clare County Highway Commissioner, who is helping lead the effort for this, to pull in two townships that are bordered by it, two counties, and then the city of O'Clare. So it really is a truly regional effort, and all parties are participating in the cost of it this time. So it's been much talked about, and now this is the first step to hopefully, some point in the future, when the traffic and the needs arise, that it would be expanded and the right-of-way would be available at that time for an expansion. Next one? Just a few of the key points. There will be a public stakeholder process for this. There'll be open houses, they'll be reaching out to businesses, the residents, all different groups. They'll look at different alternatives for Highway T, where you will have access to T, if it's a freeway like an interstate or an expressway like Claremont Avenue, where you have intersections instead of, instead of interchanges. And then it will identify the right-of-way for the recommended alternative after the stakeholder process is brought forward. Total contract cost is $115,000. The city of O'Clare's portion is 30% of that, at $34,500. Air's Associates was the successful responder to that, so their office in O'Clare here will help with the effort. And when approved by all of the municipal partners for this, work will begin, and it's, the contract is to be wrapped up by December of next year. So, again, it's not a construction project. I wouldn't anticipate any ground will be turning anytime soon, or even anytime moderately soon, but this is at least the first step in getting the ball rolling for this. Without, I'll take any questions.
Are there any questions from council? I don't see any. Thank you, Mr. Solberg. On a motion then by Council Vice President Emanuel and seconded by Councilmember Bergy, this item is moved. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Christopherson?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Gregert?
Aye.
Klinkhammer?
Aye.
Lor?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Zhang?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Bergy?
And that item passes unanimously. Agenda item number 21 is a resolution approving WISCORE's cooperative agreement, cooperative agreement between the state of Wisconsin, Department of Transportation, and the city of O'Clare for a GIS station. Again, good afternoon, Mr. Solberg.
Thank you. Earlier this year, the Wisconsin Department of Transportation approached the city about constructing a Jeep, a WISCORE station, which helps with surveying and gathering coordinate and elevation information from the Global Positioning System satellites that we use for surveying, and constructing a base station on our wastewater treatment plant site. So their proposal was to, WISDOT would construct and maintain the site on our wastewater treatment plant campus, the city of O'Clare would allow it to The City of Eau Claire would allow it to remain there, and then the city would receive a license for this base station at no cost to use in the future. And what this base station does is it allows surveyors and contractors in the area to know their position to an area smaller than the size of a golf ball when they're doing work, gathering survey information. It saves time. It cuts down on errors. It improves accuracy. And it just, it takes, you know, much as computers improve, surveying improves also, and this is the next generation of infrastructure that helps the surveying and the global positioning of coordinates within our county. So there is more information in your packet, but it's, it's a fairly mundane obelisk that will be constructed. I believe it's about 24 feet at the base, 12 inches, 12 inches at the top, and about 10 feet tall. With that, I'll take any questions.
Are there any questions from council, from Mr. Solberg? I don't see any. Thank you. On a motion then by Councilmember Worthman, and seconded by Councilmember Gregert, this item is moved. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Emanuel?
Aye.
Gregert?
Aye.
Klinkhammer?
Aye.
Loar?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Jeong?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Bergy?
Aye.
Christopherson?
Aye.
And that item passes unanimously. Agenda item number twenty-two is a resolution approving an amendment to the loan agreement between Gateway Industrial Park Corporation, the city, and Xcel Energy. Good afternoon, Mr. Winsens.
Good afternoon, Council President Weld and members of the city council. Before you, this afternoon, is an amendment to a loan agreement between Gateway Industrial Park Corporation and, and the City of Eau Claire. This agreement originally was entered into in 1985, when the city and Xcel Energy formed Gateway Industrial Corporation. At that time, both Xcel Energy, as well as the City of Eau Claire, loaned a principal sum of $880,000 to Gateway Industrial Development Corporation. And this was done in 1996. Gateway has repaid a portion of that loan to both the city and Xcel. And both the city and Xcel are each owed, owed, excuse me, $500,000 at the present time. And that's currently, the payment on that is currently due as a lump sum on May 30th, 2020. So the resolution before you this afternoon would extend the date that that loan is due from May 30th, 2020 to May 30th, 2023. So staff is recommending that this resolution be approved by the city council extending the term of the loan agreement between Xcel Energy and the City of Eau Claire to Gateway Industrial Park Corporation. Be happy to answer questions.
Are there any questions from council? I don't see any questions. Thank you very much. On a motion then by Councilmember Anderson, and seconded by Councilmember Klinkhammer, this item is moved. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Gregert?
Aye.
Klinkhammer?
Aye.
Loar?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Jeong?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Bergy?
Aye.
Christopherson?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
And that item passes unanimously. Agenda item number twenty-three is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an addendum to the memorandum of understanding with Merge LLC for joint construction of the transit, transfer center and residential housing. Good afternoon, Mr. Nick.
Good afternoon. Thank you. Indeed, in front of you is an amendment to the MOU that we have with Merge. This is regarding planned construction on the Tiger Grant Program, the FTA program, supporting a new city transit transfer station with residential housing planned above that to facilitate the ongoing design and construction of this project. We entered into now an extended MOU. If you recall, last time I was in front of you and we discussed this, you authorized a 45-day extension. During that timeframe, we've now worked out a longer-term extension that would continue our relationship with Merge, working towards design of this joint building through the end of the year, and then hopefully, construction beginning sometime in spring of, of 2021. And so not only does it extend the MOU to give us more time to design and then draft that and get approvals for that development agreement, but it also sets out terms of the financial obligations for the design, makes the city the fiscal agent for that process. We, we already were for the design of our transit transfer, but now we are for the entirety of the project, with Merge making reimbursements to the city, as you see in the exhibit, of $150,000 and three installments of $50,000, in addition to approximately $37,000 of design work that they've already, Merge has already expended in that process. Last thing I'll let you know and give you a positive update on is the city is, is now ready to execute, neither just has today, or, or city manager expected to sign it in the near future of what the FTA terms as the paper grant agreement. Seems a bit of an odd, but basically, it's, it's the grant agreement, but they term it the paper grant agreement, moving forward on that $5 million and significantly allowing the city to expend funds out of that FTA federal grant in furtherance of the project. And it includes a timeframe and requirements that have design going through this fall, concluding in early 2021 with projected construction in, in spring of 2021. And so with your approval of this today, Merge has already signed this agreement. We're all ready to move forward in that direction and had a, a video meeting late last week in that regard with, with our engineers, design team, and also, what am I looking for? Project consultants. So LHB and then our project consultants in Market and Johnson, as well as Merge and city officials. And all are on board with this and looking forward to get going pending your approval. So with that, if you have any questions, happy to try to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Nick. Are there any questions from council? I don't see any questions. Thank you very much. On a motion then by Councilmember Beaton, and seconded by Councilmember Jeong, this item is moved. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Klinkhammer?
Aye.
Loar?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Jeong?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Bergy? Bergy?
Aye.
Christopherson?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Gregert?
Aye.
And that item passes unanimously. Agenda item number twenty-four is a resolution approving the final plat for Walnut Grove One, located north of Aspen Ridge Drive and west of County Road F. Good afternoon, Mr. Allen.
Good afternoon, Council President Weld and members of the city council. Again, before this afternoon is a request to approve the final plat for the first phase of Walnut Grove, known as Walnut Grove One, located north of Aspen Ridge Drive, west of County Road F. This phase is actually for the twin home development portion. That's essentially the, the lower or southern yellow highlighted portion shown on the screen in front of you. This is a zoning, rezoning map that shows the general area in question. County Line Road is to the south of the screen, bottom of the screen, and then County Road F is to the right or east, with the Aspen Meadows project already underway and moving forward to the south and west of this project. This property and project as a whole has been before you a few times already. First, back in January for annexation, and then again in April for rezoning to R1 and R2P. Plan Commission, in the midst of that, approved a preliminary plat in March. This most recently was before you at your last set of meetings two weeks ago for the annexation of the connection to County Road F for the Caden Court extension, as well as the developers' agreement, which was conditionally approved by the city council at that time as well. If we can go to the next slide, please? This shows, again, the, the overall area for Phase One to the north. The top of the screen is, what's labeled as Outlot Three, and this is, that's for future development, future phase of the project for these single-family homes. There'll be 61 lots in that area, again, for the future. What you see drawn here along Caden Court, and then again, accessing to that newly annexed property to the east, still on County Road F, would be 28 lots or 14 structures for twin home development. Again, this is the Phase One of the Walnut Grove project. This, again, went to Plan Commission at their meeting last week and is before you with their recommended, recommendation for approval. And I'll stand for any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Allen? I do not see any questions. Thank you very much. On a motion then by Councilmember Law, and seconded by Councilmember Christopherson, this item is moved. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Loar?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Jeong?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Bergy?
Aye.
Christopherson?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Gregert?
Aye.
Klinkhammer?
Aye.
And that item passes unanimously. Agenda item number twenty-five is a resolution extending the emergency declaration in the City of Eau Claire. City Manager Peters?
Thank you, Council President Weld and their city council. I have nothing more to add than the presentation I made on this topic earlier. I did want to circle back to Councilmember Worthman's question. Can somebody be tested if they are not symptomatic? And the answer to that question is that you can be tested, certainly if you have symptoms, but also if you don't have symptoms if it is a public health matter. So they look at it and will evaluate the situation. And if, if it relates to the public health in general, then anybody should be able to get a test in the Eau Claire area.
Are there any questions? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Peters. Are there any questions from council? Council Vice President Emanuel?
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Mr. Peters, for the opportunity to discuss this. I had a question to email ahead of time, just a question I'm interested about.
Council Vice President? We're having, we're having trouble hearing you. I don't know if you're able to get closer to your microphone, or?
Let's see, is this any better?
A little.
I sent Dale an email. Maybe he can reference the email and answer the questions, just for technology's sake. I apologize.
All right, just give us one moment.
The question related around the hiring of temporary firefighters. And let me pull it up here. So first off, the, so in, in March, when we were kind of gearing up for what we needed to prepare for and increased runs and increased capacity within the fire department, at the same time, CBT C had canceled their classes, and there were paramedic students there at the time. And so we've hired 10 of those paramedic students to work for the, the City of Eau Claire. They are EMT certified. They are not paramedic certified, but they're EMT certified, and they also have their firefighter certification. And so we've, we had hired them to kind of backfill and to round out the department, so we had more capacity. The, at this point, we do not plan to keep them on after August 2nd. So I think that was really one of the other questions, is how long do we think that we were going to keep them on? And that would be, you know, through, through August 2nd would be their, their last day of, of employment with us. So I don't know. I don't know if that, did that address the question, Vice President Emanuel?
Thank you, and I apologize for our technology here. Yes, that does. Thank you very much for sharing a little bit more and also for sharing the end date.
Yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Yeah, it's been a challenge. I mean, we were trying to think proactively and, and build our capacity, but be responsible in how we do that as well.
Any other questions from Mr. Peters, from council? I don't see any. Thank you.
Thank you.
On a motion then by Council Vice President Emanuel, and seconded by Councilmember Bergy, this item is moved. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Jeong?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Bergy?
Aye.
Christopherson?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Gregert?
Aye.
Klinkhammer?
Aye.
Loar?
Aye.
And that item passes unanimously. Agenda item number twenty-six is an ordinance amending Section 13.12.062 entitled Sidewalk Cafe Permits and Section 5.28.037 entitled Sidewalk Cafes in the downtown and water sheet areas of the Code of Ordinances. Does council have any additional questions for Mr. Allen from his presentation last night? Councilmember Gregert?
Thank you, President Weld. Just my question for Mr. Allen. You know, I see the, the part of the ordinance related to, to keeping the sidewalk clear for at least four feet of movement. And I guess I'm just kind of wondering how that's been going so far, you know, throughout the last couple of years, a sidewalk cafe, and, and I guess what the strategy would be for the city staff to educate the, the property owners, the restaurateurs about that. I guess, you know, part of it is brought up by the fact that on the front page of the paper, there was a decent-sized group of folks gathering in front of acoustic cafe, and it was hard to tell whether there was four feet of space to get by. And I heard from a few people on that point, so I just wanted to, to raise that here.
Sure, thank you, Councilmember Gregert. Aaron White is in the chambers here as well, and I know he's had a lot of conversations with individual business owners, so he's here to maybe give a...
What we did is we put together a detailed checklist with the applications that went out directly to all of the businesses that could potentially apply for the sidewalk cafe permit. Within that checklist, we identified very specific elements of the ordinance that they would have to meet. We did specify the six feet of social distancing requirement. We also specified that four feet must be maintained for pedestrian traffic, that all these elements have to be identified within their site plan and have to be submitted with the application. I also saw the the newspaper picture this morning, and obviously that is there were some chairs that were moved from tables away from what was originally submitted within the application, so that will have to be addressed as well. But the businesses are aware, were made aware that they have to meet all these elements for their application to be to even be moved up to engineering to be reviewed. My staff and I reviewed them first to make sure all those elements had been included before we even submit them to engineering and licensing for review.
Thank you, Mr. White.
Do? Thank you.
Any other questions from council? I don't see any. Thank you very much. I'm sorry, we do have Councilmember Worthman.
Sorry, I just raised my hand to make a comment once it's moved.
Okay, all right. So on a motion then by Councilmember Worthman and seconded by Councilmember Gregert, this item is moved. Councilmember Worthman.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Mr. White, as well for your work on this. And, you know, I just think this is I've actually received a number of people weighing in saying they're very supportive of this. And clearly, I think this given, you know, not only what's happening right now with the pandemic, but opportunities even beyond that for restaurants, you know, and like-minded businesses to be able to expand outside, I think is important. And it creates a good culture, I think, too, of, you know, people being outdoors and sort of experiencing, you know, our our community in a different way. I do think, and I hope, that there's additional, you know, there's additional time and effort spent on looking at what are other opportunities to do these kinds of things. And I mentioned yesterday at our council meeting that some communities have looked at parklets and expanding into parklets on the street in a safe way. You see that in a lot of other communities. And the other one was, you know, looking at potentially, you know, the roadway as well, and looking at closed down roadways as another opportunity where we'd be a pedestrian thoroughfare and offer those opportunities. So I understand that at this time, the, you know, business community, especially restaurants, have not been asking for that or demanding that. But I think with, you know, hopefully in the future, there's a little bit more time spent on looking at whether that could be an option. But I think overall on this, I'm very supportive. And as a council member who represents our downtown and many of the businesses that are impacted positively by this change, I will be supporting it.
Thank you, Councilmember Worthman. Any other discussion from council? Councilmember Gregert.
Yeah, thank you, President Weld, and just want to thank city staff for working on this and also just getting it moving before it ultimately came to us for a vote through the emergency order two. Definitely something I I've heard from people is, you know, the interest in making sure our businesses are continue to be supported. And I think this is a good long-term idea because, you know, ultimately, it has a number of safeguards where if there are neighboring businesses, they can choose to not allow this in front of them, but if they want to, they can participate and offer some of the space in front of their businesses for outdoor dining. I am somewhat concerned, I guess, about, you know, obviously, our business community is in a very difficult spot right now, so it's maybe hard to to envision a different future, but the I would like to raise, you know, and potentially challenge the business community to think about, you know, what they could do to business to to have even more outdoor opportunities like parklets and and opening up streets to more pedestrian and bicycle and dining opportunities, just because we haven't really tried that too much in this community, but we're seeing essentially a revolution across the planet where streets and and parking spaces are being used differently. And it's really getting people more excited about their community and and just getting out more and supporting, in some cases, more businesses than they would otherwise. You know, I think when we take when we look at the fact that this ordinance takes away pedestrian space, but but holds very strongly to to keeping space for automobiles, we have to look at, you know, what our priorities really are as a community, and this is kind of where we're at right now, but I I hope we we move beyond that a bit more and look at the space that would be set aside for automobiles as a as an opportunity to reduce our dependency on the automobile because it ultimately is creating a lot of missed opportunities for our downtown in particular. So I will be supporting this today, but but with the understanding that I'm hoping that there's ways to continue the dialogue about about, you know, parklets in particular as kind of a next step. So, thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Gregert. Councilmember Bergy.
Thank you, Council President. I just want to share that I also have received emails in favor of this sidewalk cafe permits and sidewalk cafes in downtown on Water Street. I also reached out to the Visita Eau Claire Board President and Executive Director of the Visita Eau Claire, and they both are very enthusiastically supporting this as well. So just want to share that information to my colleagues, and I look forward to supporting and enjoying the restaurants downtown open out on the sidewalk and in the fresh air. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Bergy. Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you, Council President. I just want to follow up with my appreciation for comments by my colleagues about now as a, you know, I will be supporting this, but I think now is a first step in a way to envisioning how we can better balance the needs to ensure mobility and access for all people against the the need to have a lot more wide-open spaces for people to be distancing themselves. And I think that this is a this is a time for us to be reimagining what our city can be in terms of walkability and the ability to have a lot of space around you when you're walking around, which other cities have begun to explore. So I think this is a good first step, and I hope that we can continue to innovate boldly as we move forward.
Thank you, Councilmember Anderson. Councilmember Worthman, did you have another comment? Councilmember Gregert? Any other?
I didn't mean to have my hand up.
No worries. Any other discussion in regards to sidewalk cafes? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Worthman.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Beaton.
Aye.
Bergy.
Aye.
Christopherson.
Aye.
Emanuel.
Aye.
Gregert.
Aye.
Clinkhammer.
Aye.
Lor.
Aye.
Weld.
Aye.
And that item passes unanimously. That concludes our business agenda. There are no ordinances for introduction, so that brings us to announcements. City Manager Peters.
Thank you, Councilmember Weld and members of the City Council. I have three tonight. First, just to remind you, you have a work session after the meeting, one that I am very excited that you're having, and I wish you much success as you're going to be working on the city manager hiring process. So I hope you have a wonderfully successful and productive meeting there. The other thing I wanted to talk about is just a little bit of a reflection on Juneteenth, and I hope that all of you had an opportunity to participate in part of that last week. It was an amazing community conversation. It was educational. It was moving, and quite frankly, for me, I found it to be very, very powerful. And what I wanted to just talk a little bit tonight about is just to share with you that that I hope that that's not the end, but it's the beginning of listening and participating and responding and educating, and that as an organization, we want to continue that conversation. We want to be open to learning, open to change, open to improvements, because this really is a unique time. There's there's an energy and a commitment that in my 30 years in the organization, you know, in the community, I've never felt before. And it's not only from the community, but it's from the leaders of the community, and it's coming from the institutions in our community and the organizations of the community. And I just wanted to share with you that we're working to develop, hopefully, will be a constructive, inclusive pathway forward, you know, for the Chippewa Valley to engage this energy in a way that can make us really more inclusive, welcoming, and have opportunity for everybody. So just wanted to reflect a little bit on, you know, the the energy that's in the community right now and and some work that's happening there. The last announcement that I would have tonight is one that is bittersweet for me, but this is Mr. Pipinger's last meeting with the City Council. He graciously and with much gratitude on my part, extended his his retirement to help us through the at least the the first part of the pandemic. And so he's his last day is going to be on July 5th, so he'll be working next week, but this is his last council meeting. And just for a little bit of reflection, he's been with the city for 23 years. He started working in 1996, and he started working in our sewer division. And I can tell you, as a fellow coworker of his at the time, Jeff had a real passion for maintenance and safety, the safety of our employees. People don't necessarily recognize that sewage work is really one of the the most dangerous professions that we have. And quite frankly, we've had more fatal, if you look at the history of the city, there have been more fatalities in our sewer utility than in any other division in the community. So they're working in confined spaces, they're working with dangerous gases, and he really lifted up the level of safety that we had and also our maintenance. If you go back to the late 80s, this city had a lot of sewer backups. I mean, they were a regular occurrence in this community, and they're not a regular occurrence anymore. And that is in large part to the work and dedication that that Jeff has had to the community. And of course, he oversaw a $40 million expansion to make a state-of-the-art plant that we had. And then I've had the very distinct pleasure in 2016 when he was promoted to head up the Community Services Division. And one of the things that he's done there is done a significant amount of work of cross training, and it really was that cross-training that allowed us to handle 113 inches of snow a year ago relatively seamlessly for the community by by cross-training and working with with employees across the divisions. He was, of course, key to our successful $5 million Tiger grant for the new transfer station, and he's incredibly proud of the two new dog parks that were brought online. And so anyway, he has certainly been a go-to person for all of us. He takes on a wide variety of issues. He's proactive. He's very action committed. And Jeff, you come up for a minute, even though with this darn pandemic, I can't even, you know, shake your hand, but just want to wish you a long, happy, and healthy retirement. So well deserved. So.
You know, certainly, it's been a good career, and I was fortunate to be able to actually work in an area that I actually went to school for. So I always encourage my my children, when when you go to school, try to do something you really want to do the rest of your life, because the old saying goes, if you love what you do, you'll never work a day in your life. And that's the way it's been for me. It's certainly been a privilege working with Dale and the team that he has put together and department heads. It's, you know, it's a team. It really is a team. And and many of you know that I did a lot of coaching years ago when my kids were younger, and I always used to tell them, you know, what does team mean? And it and I had them by the end of the time that I had them, they knew exactly what it meant. It means together, everyone achieves more. And they knew that, and they knew it so much, they got within a game of going to the Little League World Series. So I want to thank you, council, too. You guys have been a pleasure to work with. You know, certainly, a lot of, you know, as Dale said, there's a lot of stuff that comes our way, and we have to handle that, and we try to do it the best we can. So I want to thank you.
Mr. Pipinger, you will be surely missed by this community, by our staff, and people that you worked hard with over the last 23 years, by this council. You've held a very difficult position, and and your calmness and your positiveness has just made it always an enjoyable experience, no matter how many inches of snow we have. So we wish you many, many, many years of enjoying enjoyment and retirement and and the next chapter for you. So councils, welcome to share any comments if they wish.
Yeah, Jeff, just thank you for all of your service to our community, and yeah, hopefully, you got some big things lined up in your retirement, but just thank you for all of your work and service for our community.
Thank you.
I think you're too young.
I look that way. I'm really not that young.
Catherine, did you have?
Yeah, thank you so much, Jeff, for all of your work and dedication to the public, of course, in your military service and to our country and in the past several decades to our city. I also want to recognize what a huge lift it is to not only serve in your role, but really to be the first one, and that was combined of at least two departments. That's just a huge undertaking, and there is no playbook of how to do that. And so you really had to not only provide the leadership, but also the ingenuity of how to do that. It's a lot of work mentally and emotionally. So I wish you all the best in your new chapter. And I know before COVID hit, I remember sitting in the back of council chambers, less than six feet away, mind you, just asking you about what are you going to do next and just your your dreams and visions of being up north and and having a lot of time with your family. And that's the most important thing, is having that time with your family. So I wish you all the best, and I hope that you smile and feel joy and satisfaction in your heart when you are going around our community and see what you are a part of.
Councilmember Bergy.
Thank you, Council President. Yes, Mr. Pipinger, I just want to share my thanks and gratitude as well. It's been a pleasure to working with you for the last two and a half years or so. I see that all you've done and brought to our community, and it's pretty great. And I hope to see you around the North Side, too. I know, I believe you live up there, so maybe we'll see you see you around. So but enjoy retirement. I hope you have lots of great days with your family and enjoying what you get to do. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pipinger. Thank you, Mr. Peters. All right, we do have a work session in 10 minutes. 5:40, we'll get started, and we'll those of them in chamber will be will remain here, and then obviously those that are joining us remotely will will see you back here shortly. If there's no objection from council, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Have a great night.
This program is brought to you by This program is brought to you by New Works in cooperation with the city of Eau Claire. This program is simulcast on WRF 101.1.